All speaking to order, please stand for the pledgable agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation, united, indivisible, for the great justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all of those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Danyou?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A minutes of the Board of Directors meeting of the Scranton Sewer Authority held February 21, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B memorandum received, March 25, 2019, from City of Scranton Business Administrator regarding municipal building improvements.
There any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, single tax office city funds distributed comparison report, 2018-2019 year to date, March 31, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I do. The, we held a meeting for interested members of the Complete Council Committee on Thursday night. It was well attended. If anyone else is interested in serving on the Complete Council Committee for the census next year, please reach out to either the city solicitor's office or the city clerk's office and leave your name and we'll get back to you. Also, St. Lucy's Church will hold their annual spaghetti dinner on April 3rd and 4th. Takeout dinners are available from 3:00 to 5:00. Sit-down dinners from 5:00 to 8:00. Tickets are available at the door or call the rectory at (570) 347-9421. The cost is $10 per dinner and spaghetti sauce is also available for purchase for $15 a gallon. And that's all I have tonight.
Anyone else?
I have one announcement. The broadcast server for ECTV suffered a catastrophic failure last Tuesday. They worked quickly with the company who builds the equipment that is used and they're working on getting a new unit at this time. So this piece of equipment allows ECTV to broadcast and rebroadcast programming. They're hoping to have it back on the air by early next week. So you could, currently you could still see the live broadcast of the city council meeting, which is on now. However, ECTV is unable to rebroadcast the meeting until their server is fixed. Anyone wishing to see a rebroadcast can go on the ECTV YouTube page and watch the rebroadcast at this time. So they're hoping that that will be fixed by next week. We appreciate all the hard work of our friends at ECTV trying to get this up and running.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. With regard to the stormwater study, I know that the city is considering three options: a regional authority, a city authority, and in-house with the DPW. Have any decisions been made? Does anyone know? Or is that still a, an action in progress?
It's still very much an open discussion. We're waiting on Senator Blake. He's trying to arrange meetings with the different officials from up and down the valley to have that conversation about the regional approach.
Okay, and the county commissioners are not involved?
To my knowledge, the county commissioners are not involved at all. They're, in fact, just the opposite. They're busy talking about hashtag no rain tax.
With regard to city hall renovations, I read Mr. Bolzoni's four-page memo, which you attached in 3B. And I have to compliment Mr. Bolzoni on the thoughtful cost-benefit analysis he did in that memo, which is what we should all expect of our city employees, especially high-level ministers, to be doing as they're trying to safeguard taxpayer dollars. It's unfortunate that that type of thoughtful analysis was not done, or if it was done, was not shared with the public when we monetized the parking garages and the sale of the sewer authority to look at the pros and cons and impact on city finances. Perhaps we could have avoided a lot of pain and a lot of finger pointing after the fact. But I, you have to give credit where credit's due. And I would say in the past five years, a lot of the accomplishments within the administration really are due to Mr. Bolzoni's leadership. And it's unfortunate that he doesn't live in Scranton, but you have to give him credit for his leadership. And I thought that memo was outstanding, and anybody who hasn't read it should sit down and read it. It is a great think piece. Okay. I saw in the paper also requests for bids, two for the Serenti Building for exterior and general repairs and one for the Novembrino Park. So I don't know whether these costs have been factored into the 2019 budget because I don't recall seeing on the city's website their capital budget. Would you know if these items are in the capital budget? Well, maybe you can get Mr. Bolzoni to talk to the mayor and put in that capital budget on the website. So we want to know what kind of money we're talking about. And with regard to the garbage fees, the $16.8 million in delinquent fees, I was kind of curious. When Jim and Joseph Kohut published their article on March 30th on the front page, they listed nine entities, the highest delinquencies, and the garbage fee total for those nine entities was $539,498.25. So I said to myself, now, these people couldn't possibly be delinquent in their real estate taxes, now, could they? As it turned out, six of the nine were delinquent for an additional total of $238,959.68 for a grand total of delinquencies of $778,457.93. The good news was, three of the nine were not delinquent, but six were. Now, I don't know whether some of these entities are dead, in jail, in a foreign country, or have been abducted by aliens. But I can ima, see, I don't pay garbage fee because I rent, and I pay that fee through a private waste haul via my rent. So I don't pay that garbage fee. But if I did, I'd be sitting there thinking, I must be an idiot. Here I am paying $300 a year, when I could do like certain people who've been appointed to the Scranton School District Board and just, you know, not pay it, put it on my to-do list for the future. And oh, if I get threatened with a lien, well, at the last second, I'll run down and I'll work up kind of minimal payment. But I must be an idiot if I'm paying $300 a year when I don't need to because there is no consequence for failure to pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Wes Spindler?
Wes Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Well, I guess I'm a double idiot because I pay $600 a year. I have a double. That's, I said, for 17 years, I've come and argued about that. How does this happen? How does $16.8 million just go down the drain and all they're doing is putting liens on their properties? Obviously, that's not helping. President Rogan, can I ask Attorney Menor a question?
Sure, you could ask council a question if we think it's appropriate, if he can answer, but sure.
Does the city have any other recourse besides liens to go after these people? I mean, we're such a cash-strapped city. There's got to be other recourse.
Well, one of the other possibilities that nobody likes is to not pick up trash for people who don't pay the bill. And that causes a lot of other issues.
Garnish their wages. Is that a possibility?
Attorney Menor, do you care to offer any input on that?
We have the ability to lien a property, and leaning a property presents this difficulty for somebody who owns a home. They're not going to be able to get a mortgage because no bank will take second place to a municipal lien. They won't be able to sell a property because a lawyer would do a title search or his title insurance company would have that done, and they wouldn't allow a person to buy it with a lien standing. So a lien has some value, for sure. I don't believe we have the right to go in and sell the property. That's by statute. Where a private individual might be able to do that with a judgment. But because we have a lien without a hearing, without a trial, without due process, we don't get a judgment in the sense that a bank does or a creditor does against an individual. They then can execute on the property. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's as much as I can tell you in a nutshell.
If we could garnish their wages?
No, you can't garnish their wages.
Well, there's, one couple, their name jumped out at me, Alfred and Judith Pantusso. Does anyone know if that's from Pantusso Motors? And if so, could we go after the business? Maybe we can look into that?
Again, I don't know the legal aspect, but I don't think you could go after a business for a homeowner, something a homeowner owes. You know, unfortunately, the problem, as Attorney Menor mentioned, the delinquencies don't have the same, we don't have the same recourse as we do for somebody that didn't pay their taxes. The alternative of not picking up trash isn't really on the table either. Now, they do get paid when there's a sale of the house. If the house sells or there's a mortgage, at that point, it has to be paid or the sale won't go through. But that could be 10, 20, 30 years from now.
It's just a darn shame that these people get away with it, and they don't seem to care. But it's ridiculous. Like I said, that could pay for the renovation of city hall and then some. And while I'm on that subject, as I said in the past, I'm against selling this. As Ron Elman said last week, city hall is, this building is scrambled. That piece of junk that you're talking about buying on Franklin Avenue, that's not city hall. It's going to take $5 million to buy it. How many more billions will it take to renovate the inside to make it suitable for all the departments in this building? You'd have to put a new council chambers in, unless you don't plan on doing that and doing away with our public comment. But you can't do that. And as Bob Bowles said, why wasn't this put out to bid? I don't trust Highland Associates as far as I can throw them. If memory serves me correct, their name was involved in the Kudara-Munchak crimes. I don't trust them as far as I can throw them, like I said. Why wasn't it put out for bid? You're putting other things out to bid. Why is, why isn't this being put out to bid?
Councilman Gahn just mentioned that it was put out to bid. I did not see that, but I don't know if you care to come in?
They were the only bidder, it's my understanding. It was put out to bid. They were the only bidder.
Okay.
Well, I mean, even with one, I think we should have more than one bid either way. So even if Highland Park won the bid...
There's, I feel like we should still be going against three different bids, three different eyes, three different companies take a look at the problem. That's just my feeling.
I agree. Like I said, it'd be a darn shame to let someone else buy this building. Oh, can I have more time?
If you want to just finish your thoughts, another minute.
Well, I usually don't talk about the school district because it's not the forum, but I guess everyone knows, well, Bob Lesh getting caught having petitions signed on taxpayers' time. No wonder our school district is in such bad shape, because the people in this city keep electing idiots like that, that don't know what the heck they're doing. He should have been fired. He was fired once and got his job back. He got a written reprimand. Wow. Bob, go sit in the corner, don't do that again. Might as well have said that, because there was a, an attorney from Philadelphia on the news that night, he said, if he worked for the state, he would have been fired. The man should have been fired. And I said, that's why our school district is in such bad shape, because idiots like that keep getting elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Fay Frannis?
Fay Frannis, Scranton. Mr. Gahn, I mentioned to you a while ago about the street line down the street on the corner of Railroad and Luzern. Nothing's been done yet, but could you also add, when you go down Luzern, you make a right, when you're coming up Railroad in the 400 block, there are also a sign, a line, left turn or straight. Another one should be right-hand turn or left-hand. Like in the corner of Railroad and Luzern, should be left-hand turn or right-hand turn. Coming up Railroad, it should be left-hand turn or straight. But another one, on the corner of Fourth and Third, when you come down Fourth Avenue, it's one-way, and you make that, there's a little island there, and you make a right-hand turn, it's very narrow. There's white lines in the street, which is supposed to be for a bike path, and there's no no parking sign there. There absolutely has to be no parking sign there because cars are parking there, and you only have this much room. Car coming down, that car parked there, and you could get smashed. There's the white lines, the black cars, but the cars parked there all the time in the corner of Third and Broadway. So that needs a no parking sign. They put no parking signs where the bike lane is. So I'd appreciate if you get a no parking sign there as well in the corner of Third and Broadway. Okay. Now, as far as this garbage fee, can't you get that put in the paper like Janet Evans did? All the names of the people? I know it might cost the city a lot, but isn't it worth with the money you could possibly get by publishing these names of the delinquent people? Won't you please consider that? You have to do something.
They actually, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, they have been published from time to time.
No, that was, that was like six, eight, 10 years ago.
I do think it's worthwhile, and actually, in this day and age, it may even be worth doing it in other forms of media other than the newspaper as well.
Well, I think you should put it in the paper. And any reason why you wouldn't want to is, again, doing nothing. You care more about quality of life than you do about this garbage fee. This is millions of dollars. So I think it's worth whatever it costs to put it in the paper. You think the media, what's it going to be in the media? On the news one night? No. Mr. Evans, I blame you for much of this. You're the finance chair, and I've been after you for four and five years to find out how much money came in, how much, you have never, ever given me an answer. Not, Wayne?
I've answered you over and over again, the same answer over and over again. It's in litigation, we cannot get into that. I don't know what you don't understand about that.
Here's what you don't understand, Mr. Evans. I've been asking you years before it went into a lawsuit, years, before the lawsuit even happened. And you still would never give me an answer for anything.
I did give you the answer.
You did not. Every week I asked you, you said, well, how come you didn't tell me how much went in, if you went, how much went in, how much went out? You never gave me that, did you? All you had to do was...
I didn't have, I didn't have that information.
All you had to do was get onto the treasure and ask.
I asked for the information, I didn't have, had that information at that time, and then I went into litigation.
You could have gotten that information.
I tried to get that information.
Oh, you tried. You didn't try hard enough. So it's on you, the finance chair, for not, for millions of these dollars, because you didn't, you care more about the quality of life. You did not do anything about this. What did you do? You didn't get any answers long before the lawsuit, long before the lawsuit.
Fay, just go on, move on.
Pardon me?
All right, I heard you.
Well, I hope everybody in the city hears me, because you're the reason we're way behind. And what are you going to do about it?
I'm the reason for a $16 million delinquent garbage fee that...
You're responsible for not doing anything about even asking liens to be put on these properties. When Joe Ressler was here once, he said there's only two liens put on the property. So how about all the time before?
We all were part of the decision to make liens. That was well before us. We, this is the city council that actually decided to put liens on property.
Pardon me?
We are the ones that passed legislation to put the liens on the properties.
How long ago, though? I mean, when Joe Ressler was here, we got two liens. Then they started doing more and more and more. So you didn't really pursue.
We don't do the liens, Fay, that's not our job. We passed a legislation to do the liens, and we pressured to get the liens on.
I know that, but you didn't hear much of it.
And now liens are being done.
You always have an excuse for everything. You always, always have an excuse. How come you didn't say, I told you, but you don't like what I say? You've never told me anything. And that's another thing. You don't want to transcribe these minutes anymore because you don't want people to see what you say to us, not because of the money.
Fay...
You don't want people to know what we say.
It's on YouTube every week, it's live on TV.
Yeah, how many people, senior citizens?
It's on the city council. Are you serious?
Again, I'm talking, Mr. Evans.
I'm talking too. You're asking questions, you're not giving us a chance to respond.
Then I want extra time here. I want extra time here if you're going to continue to talk long.
That's the council president's decision, if you had extra time. You're asking questions, I'm responding to your questions, and you don't like them.
I didn't ask a question, I'm talking.
As usual, you don't like the answers.
Wow. I'm not asking a question, I'm stating a fact. You don't want people to know what's transcribed because they could look it up. I could come here and read what you said. If I had it transcribed like it used to be, I could say, oh, Mr. Evans, you said this and I said this, because you always say you didn't say this. I could read it right off the transcription. But who's going to sit and watch a YouTube video and write every word a person says? And how many senior citizens know even how to get on YouTube or have a computer?
Our words are transcribed, Fay.
Pardon me?
Our words are transcribed. Everything I say is transcribed.
Where? On the minutes?
On the minutes.
Since when?
They never stop being transcribed.
No, they're not.
The fifth, the fifth order motions are transcribed by council members.
Yes, the public input is not transcribed because you don't want the people to know what we say and what you say back.
How do the people get the copy of the minutes? Where do they go for those copies?
In the minutes, and it has everybody to discuss.
Where, online?
Yes.
So they can go online to get the minutes, but they can't go online to click a video to watch the meeting?
And when you do, you can't write down every word somebody says. The other one, you just print them out.
In this day and age, you feel that transcribed minutes are more relevant than a video when the person's actually speaking, and every word is being spoken back and forth, just like we are now?
And I have to write down every word that's being said to come back and tell people what you said and what I said. I have to write every word that you say instead of just printing it out in a transcription. But you don't have that available to the people anymore, before you have an answer for everything. You shouldn't even be sitting up there.
Thank you. Sarah Lancaster.
Hi. Yes, I'm back again. I'll be back every Monday after this until you people tell me to not come back. But good evening, council members. I have a couple of things to discuss. The first thing I want to discuss is the street light. I gave her my information, and I got sent a petition. I'm not walking and knocking on anybody's door where I live. I mean, I made a mistake by saying the things I said last Monday on TV, because now it's like recordable, like she said. But if there's street lights lined up in Meridian Avenue, and they didn't need a petition, why can't the same thing happen? Because that light, that city light, would be a deterrent to crime. It would be good for officer safety. If he had to run, you know, in back of the fence or whatever, he might die, you know, like that guy did, like one of the officers did. Anyway, it's a good thing to have, and I don't think that a petition should warrant the need for it. I think as a city entity, well, you guys don't really make the ordinances, that's the commissioners, right? But anyway, I think you guys should tell them, listen, somebody could die, let's put a light up. Because, because if I have to rely on other people liking the light, it's not going to happen. You know, some neighbors are like cockroaches, and when the lights come on, they scurry, and then you don't see nothing. You know what I'm saying? And I seen police officers there before with flashlights going around the houses, you know what I'm saying? Anyway, yeah, that's, that's about the street light.
On that point, I don't disagree with you that it would be easier to just go and do it with the processes, and it's not specific to where you live. The whole city, if you want a street light, that's the process.
All the street lights in this whole city were happened because of petitions?
Any new street light that gets put in.
Any new street light?
Any new street light that gets put in is from, now, if the light bulb, if a bulb was burnt out, that's different, that just gets fixed. But any new street light put up anywhere in the city originates with a petition.
Right, right, right. And one more thing, where I live, it's on a cul-de-sac, and the post office, the regular mayor carrier, said that because it was a cul-de-sac, we had to erect off-curb mailboxes instead of putting one on our house. You know what I mean? You guys just look at me, I want some understanding, acknowledgement or something. Anyway, I'm thinking that if it is a cul-de-sac and it's considered a rural area, then why is it a part of City of Scranton? If it's a city, it's a city.
Well, it is a part of the City of Scranton, there's no question about that.
Right, so how can it be considered rural? You know what I mean? How do I, how do I put in a petition for that to change that one law in the City of Scranton to not be called a rural street that is actually a city street?
So that's a post office issue. If they're requiring a different kind of mailbox, that's the post office.
Right.
The city has nothing to do with it.
Right, and it's new. So like, even if I built my house before that, it's, if you were grandfathered in on the street, it doesn't matter, any new construction, you would have to put the mailbox on the curb. Do you know what I mean?
Again, that's, the post office handles that, the city has, we have no say in how the mail's delivered.
And that's the whole point. The post office is trying to save money by sending anybody that constructs a new house, they have to put one by the curb because they don't want to pay somebody to walk to the house to put it in. But there's people like me and older people that have to walk so far to their mailbox because the post office is trying to save money. Well, I say, why isn't the City of Scranton trying to save money? I had to call again about my recycling. There was a letter in the paper about it. For some reason, they're not picking up my recycling. I'm the only one that recycles on my street. But my bill for taxes is $270 if I pay it tomorrow, which I will, instead of the $300. I want to know, can I get like a pro-rated amount for recycling or trying to recycle? And who do you have to know to get somebody to pick the recycling up? What, is it because, you know, I don't know these people who haven't paid their garbage fees, that my recycling isn't getting picked up? I mean, who do you have to know to...
Your recycling should be picked up every week.
I know, but I have to take the time out of my day to call somebody to remind them to do their job, and I don't think that's my job. What do you have to do? Call the, call the head of the DPW? Because the guy that I talked to on the phone's like, well, I just answered the phone, I'll leave a note. Well, I just answered the phone, I'll try to get them on the radio. And sometimes they don't pick it up at all. So then I have to move it back to the porch, you know what I'm saying? And in the paper day, it's worse, because if there's wind, it blows it all the way around the cul-de-sac, and I gotta go around picking it up. You know what I'm saying? Anyway, let me hurry up here. How do I file a property tax appeal?
That would be with the county tax assessor's office.
Where is it at?
I believe it's in the Globe Store now.
The Globe Store. And what do I do? Just go down there and say I want to file an appeal?
They would help you with the paperwork. You need to use comparable properties in your neighborhood for the appeal.
Okay, okay, move right along. In the, in the, on the Lackawanna County website, there was a thing about recycling for a bin that takes everything. No longer, we've had to separate the stuff, you know, it's one bin instead of having the blue and the red. Does anybody know anything about that?
In Scranton, it's, it's still mixed paper.
What is the commissioners' meeting?
Second, Wednesday?
Wednesday at 10:00 AM.
Wednesday at 10:00 AM.
In the Globe, right?
Wednesday at 10:00 AM.
Okay. One more thing. Do you guys have an admission statement? I mean, as a body, a political organization, a political, you know, do you have something that you tell yourselves at a meeting to say?
We have a city home rule charter that defines what our duties are as council members, but there's not a admission statement.
Where can I get a copy of that?
We could provide you a copy of that, or it's on the city's website as well.
One of them is outdated because of as Biden and Obama's presidents, a lot of those jobs are outdated.
Thank you.
Lee Morgan?
do you have something that you tell yourselves at a meeting to say?
We have a city home rule charter that defines what our duties are as council members, but there's not an admission statement. We could provide you a copy of that or it's on the city's website as well.
One of them is outdated because of Biden and Obama's presidency. I don't know what job it is, but okay.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
Good evening, council. You know, my friend Hank asked me to come in here today first thing and thank the council for the stellar job they've done running the city because he recently sold his house in this city and he lost $113,000 in order to get out of here. And he just is beside himself wondering how this government can justify its own existence. And I'd be mad too if I lost $113,000. And that's just utterly ridiculous. Now, the $16 million in garbage fees, did anybody ever come to the conclusion maybe that the people in this city don't have that money and they're taxed so far beyond their ability to pay that there's just nothing left? And you know, it all sounds good in the newspaper. It all sounds good when you're talking about people not being able to pay. But you know, it's time for the people in this city to really realize that this city is just, you know, there's a discussion taking place about City Hall. My opinion is we should sell it. And we should take every office in this building and turn it over to the county. That's what we need to do with the vast majority of city offices. Turn them over to the county and let the county run them. Because the city can't afford them. Because of, I'd say maybe as much as 40% of the city is nonprofit. And we've elected people for a very long time that have put a lot of suits on, but they had no knowledge of government, no desire to learn it. I mean, just take a look what we've done with the parking authority garages. We've turned them over to a nonprofit who's letting a for-profit company run them and they're making money. It's remarkable. And then we sell the Scranton Seward Authority off. I don't know, it's kind of remarkable how that took place. But none of that money, as far as I know, went into the pension plans. So what was the purpose of all that? I mean, the utter disrespect for the assets of the residents of this city. I mean, you know, you have to actually see and have an understanding that this building doesn't mean a thing. And you know, when we talk about not maintaining the record, the record has a purpose. There's a reason to transcribe a record, but I don't hear you talking about it, Mr. Rogan.
I believe a videotape is stronger than putting it in.
Not necessarily. It all depends who you're talking to. Okay, but you know, the other thing is this. YouTube doesn't have an obligation to preserve any record of this city. The city itself does, for its own sake. But the people we've elected have nothing but contempt for the people that they represent. And that goes right to the school district. Look at the schools we've closed and the pain we've caused. And now we're talking about utter silliness. You know, I applied to get on that board for a reason because I wanted to go into court and have standing to make the federal government and the state reach their funding obligations. No politics, no silliness, no babble coming out of your mouth. Just straightforward, something that all five of these council members, that you are all one, could do because you have standing. But you don't do anything. You sit here and talk about utter silliness. Okay, and when you look at this administration, okay, it's probably the worst administration that I remember in my lifetime. There's nothing left of this city. And we're making fun of people who can't pay their bills. We're making fun of the residents in the city that's in such a serious decline that people are leaving. And we elect people that run around with their little suits on and don't have any understanding of government. And when you bring up something about Jefferson or about what happened in our history, oh, we can't talk about that. But you know something? Those founders were all criminals. Thomas Jefferson, Adams, Washington, all of them. Criminals because they broke away from Great Britain. They may have been patriots to us, but in reality, they were revolutionaries and they were criminals. And what we've done is we've created a government based on what they thought to break away from Britain. And the problem with the residents of the City of Scranton, they have no backbone. They have no desire to change this city. It's just remarkable. And the people we elect, they have no desire either.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening, council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. A few years ago, the last year of the Doherty administration, we're at about 7.5 million in uncollected trash fees. Now we're over 14. And it can't go on like this. It's not just small people. It's major corporations owning 35 residences and they just sclop at the situation. It's not putting somebody out of their house. It's taking a house off of somebody that doesn't want to pay their taxes. They don't want to pay their trash fees. And if they rent, they'll probably rent to a family and then you have kids that have to be educated. And if they don't grow up right, well, you need a bigger police force and who knows? But this has to stop. And the answer is not a per-bag fee. Once again, probably 100 bags while I was up in Susquehanna County, I finagled into my boss's dumpster or, which was commonly not only partially filled or even got stuck paying out of my own pocket. And that's for the birds. I don't need that. Only if I can sit with a sniper rifle up in the attic window and when one comes by, you know, legal killing, if you buy a license first. City Hall. Most of the sales pitches in the paper are pretty sad. They're kind of an insult upon my ability to add, subtract, and multiply. We can apply for a $5 million grant. And by the way, if any state representative or senator, as opposed to getting that grant pushed through, well, I can not vote for anybody. And, or we can buy a building down the street for $5 million and who knows what it'll cost to convert it. Maybe we'll be in for another five. So that'll cost us $10 million anyway and we're forsaking a $5 million grant. And once again, I'm a little tired of seeing certain people and certain institutions just expanding and expanding and expanding and then they treat us like dirt. I really resented Father Pilar's story on Jack Losko and Janet Evans. It was insufferable. They kept expanding and expanding when they're asked for more. Granted, they're one of the few that pay. But as far as I'm concerned, the pilot plan is a joke. A joke. And that's it. All you can do is ask and get your fair share of abuse. Now, so as far as I'm concerned, we should rebuild City Hall. If we have to do it on a shoestring, we do it on a shoestring. But that's the way I see it. Because any other answer, I'm still waiting for the tax bill and I know that it'll, just like the baseball field, it'll get dumped into the next county commissioners, the Globe Store. And you'll probably have a tax increase coming as of next year with county taxes. And once again, my gauge for failed governance. When you start with social legislation, you start to stand one person against another. It's gone on too long. I'm tired of hearing about this tobacco. You know, back in the 70s, a good skilled rock and roller in a band could make about $25,000 a year, which was about double the local factory wage. And not even get his hands dirty and have a lot of fun and see pretty girls all night, you know? And we came up with the DUI law. And the thing is that compensation was mentioned about compensation. Well, where is it? Now we got every dimwit riding around on cell phones piling into my car and saying, this is the first time I'm the cause of the accident. Oh, my God. You know, it's like they're, it's the equivalent of them being drunk, but they're not penalized, you know? Unless you could prove that it's their fault, then your insurance just goes up. So let's skip that because there's no compensation ever going to be done. And by the way, the compensation to be from the government will be out of my pocket.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson.
Have a good night.
Counsel, how are you?
How much time do I have?
Can you state your name for the record?
Hi, my name's Nick Senek. I have a business a block down the road. It's called Meat in the Middle. And I'm coming today because I think some action is better than no action at all. And my main concern is with the parking authority. So I'm selling sandwiches for roughly $8 a sandwich and a parking ticket costs me $25. And I'm feeding the meter as much as I can, but you know, through the lunch rush, it's hard for me to get out to the meter and put quarters in or get to my phone and do the app thing. Especially if I'm doing a delivery and I have my trunk open and I'm loading up to go to a catering event and I get a ticket just about every time I do that. I'm taking the proper actions now to deal with ABM. I'm not trying to go out and target them, but I feel like they're targeting me in a way. Because I got a ticket at 4:59 PM and they stop at 5:00. And then I got a ticket at 8:05 and it starts at 8:00. And I'm doing everything that I can to keep my business alive, but parking tickets add up. And on top of that, I'm paying $90 for the parking garage. You'd think I learned my lesson by now. I'm a year, I actually just celebrated my one year today. So I'm happy to be in business for a year in the City of Scranton. It's been tough. But I think that I could try to not take down ABM, but maybe put like a sign in front of my business. And I talked to my neighbors and they said that there used to be a 15-minute sign on the sidewalk there, which would allow people obviously to sit there for 15 minutes and come into my building and get their food and not get a ticket. Because I've had people come in to pick up food and when they went out to their car, they would have a ticket, which is aggravating in anyone's eyes. But for a business owner, I feel for my guests. And I don't want to, I feel like it may be affecting my business in a way to the point that people don't want to take the risk of getting a ticket. So I feel like I could do something about it and that's why I'm here today. I put in a request through ABM because it's with them now to get that sign put back up. If it did get, oh, I guess I forgot to mention that sign. I guess got knocked over in a snowstorm. A plow truck like banged into it and then they removed the sign. And I just got the sidewalk fixed right in front of my building. And I was going to try to talk to Mr. Hampton about putting the sign back up, but I never got the chance to.
Nick, not to cut you off, but our law department has been working on this.
Okay.
Your request for the sign was handled by us. Unfortunately, contractually with ABM, we're not allowed to pull a meter or put up a new signage without them agreeing to it. So right now, what our solicitor for the city is trying to do is work with ABM to get them to agree to pull a meter and put signage up specifically for you in that spot. We'll do a follow-up this week, right, Mr. Wee? We'll do a follow-up and we'll see actually where we are with that. And then when we hear something, if you want to leave your name and number with Cathy, we can contact you. But I'm sure you would be one of the first person to know if you see a sign go up. But that is something we've been working on and I do understand your frustration on that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that's really all I ask for. I'm trying to, you know, 25 bucks doesn't seem like much, but it's becoming an expense for me and you know, you try to limit those when you're in business.
Nick, so you do know we're having, an RFQ is going to go out for a, what we're calling a connectivity study, which is going to study all the on-street parking downtown as well as pedestrian safety and other things. So we're looking at doing a lot of changes on the on-street side. So hopefully there'll be changes for the better. Because we're trying to make sure there's more spots for small business owners. There's more on-street parking so people can come and go. But sometimes it's just common sense by the people that are enforcing it. You know, when you're out there, you know, doing a delivery or coming back and you have your trunk open, I think it's common courtesy just to, you know, give you a few minutes to get that taken care of.
Yes, yes, sir, exactly. And that's why I kind of feel targeted. Because, I mean, my car is wrapped. It says Meat in the Middle. It's sitting outside of my store 24/7 or, you know, not to that extreme, but it is sitting out there all the time. And common courtesy would be, you know, I'm a genuine person. I would go in and say, hey, just pop a quarter in your meter real fast. I know you're going on a delivery, but pop a quarter in. $25 is a lot better than $25.
Absolutely.
Thank you and congratulations on a year in business in the city.
Hey, thank you, guys. You guys rock.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Marie Schumacher. I'd like to start tonight with 5D. A few questions on that. I recognize that the complete county committee is really a marketing organization to try to get people to fill out the paperwork when they get it. But I don't think anybody can ensure that every resident in the City of Scranton is going to be counted. So that's overstated. But that aside, what is the size going to be? And who are the other appropriate officials that will be making those selections? And how will this be funded because there will be advertising and outreach?
We'll be raising money from the outside. It won't be coming out of our budget. I know Scranton tomorrow sponsored the event we had the other night.
Pardon?
Scranton tomorrow sponsored the, along with Posh, sponsored the event the other night.
What the event? I don't know.
We had an event for interested parties.
I'm sorry. I still didn't get you. You, there was a.
So what's your, what's your question? I'm sorry.
My question is, what is the size of this committee, this 2020 Complete Count Committee?
The size is going to be the amount of people that are interested in the committee and being on the committee. We're trying to get to all corners of the city.
And they have, their responsibility is marketing according to the document.
That will be a part of it. That won't be the whole thing. There's an educational component in the schools and.
That's marketing. I consider that marketing if your goal is to get people informed so they perform what you want them to do. But.
But it's also educational of getting the education of the importance of it.
There'll be no city money paid for this.
No.
The legislation is mostly symbolic, just that council's in support of having a complete count.
Then moving on to the Sorrenti Building. There is nothing in the capital budget that even talks to the Sorrenti Building. And I see there's a couple of RFQs that are out there and the RFQ for Novembrino. Why is the Sorrenti, how is the Sorrenti Building being funded again? I know some things were done on city money, but, I mean, operating budget money. But what is going, what is going on and where is it in the budget? If it's not in the capital budget, it's not in the operating budget, where is the money coming from? Did we get a grant?
The Sorrenti Building is being funded by the grants. So which particular grant?
How many dollars worth of grants?
Which particular grant and how much? I could find out for you.
Okay. I'll look forward to receiving that next week. And then I want to thank Mr. Gahn for suggesting that this document that the business administrator sent to you all was included in the third order for this week. It's pretty obvious to me at least that that little voice that's, when I read the headline about the 10-point-whatever-38, to do this building over was, you know, gee, I wonder what nonprofit wants this building? And now here we are, learning that it indeed, there's a potential buyer out there and discussions have been held and you, some of you have visited before that meeting and.
Visited where?
Pardon?
Visited where?
The Penn Fed Credit Union?
I'm not aware of any councilman visiting Penn Fed.
Nobody on council.
Okay, I'll reread that, but I'm pretty sure it said that you went down and.
Well, no, I didn't. I met with Highland to go over the proposal prior to our caucus, but I've never been in the Penn Fed building.
Okay, so what is the next step in this process? I think we need, I think we need a good analysis of all the options that are available, even including if you don't want to invest in this building, is perhaps renting down at the mall. It would maybe take up some of that empty space. And may I have one other thing? Because it sort of relates to the count, which is our homeless population. Sarasota, Florida had problems and I'm going to give this to the clerk's office and you can all look at it. We have to go beyond police. I mean, this is a humane interest and is certainly to me. It's a lot more important than building another park downtown. And maybe this will give somebody some ideas.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Norman Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I guess I want to start off by thanking Jim Lockwood for the wonderful article in the paper on the Scranton up at the park at the Treehouse. And I know the last time I was here, I didn't see any advancement on it, but there's a. But there's a lot of work going on there, so I thank him for the article, and the pictures and everything else that were in the paper, you know, so I can take that and put that to my collection. But the, I had a similar question as Marie had about the census, and I know that it was something that Glennis Johns is very much involved with, and I've been speaking with her about this. So my questions are, who, what, when, and where? And I know when you go through these things, they get put off to a committee or to the chair. So I was wondering who the chair is going to be, how many people are going to be on this committee, when will the committee be formed? 2020 is not that far away. So I was thinking that it has to really start now. And how do you become a part of the committee? And are there forms that need to be filled out to become a part of the committee? Do you put your name up for the committee? Those are the kind of questions that I have.
I mean, just, just let us know, and we're gonna, we're gonna have a training at the end of April on, you know, what goes into the committee. So anyone that's interested is more than welcome.
Okay, just send you an email.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And there'll be training on it, you were saying, and you'll be heading that committee?
No. The mayor has designated, I believe, the city solicitor and the OECD director as the administration's point people on that.
Okay, so we'll be hearing more about this then?
Yes.
Or just go ahead and send you the email?
Yes. Send me an email and express your interest, and I'll get back to you with-
Okay, fine.
All the details.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Hello, gentlemen. You know, I feel for the young man. I know how hard it is to, I guess some of you do, to start a business without somebody opening doors for you. We've got a city with so many problems, and I think you people try to avoid a lot of them in favor of downtown. In this city, it's, it's who you know. 25 years, I've phoned people about trying to get curbs on North Scranton. And here, Mount Pleasant, which is privately-owned, is getting sidewalks at the city expense, and some kind of old deal that went on. This sounds, sounds like not kosher to me. You give Guy Singers an inch, and it seems like they'd just take 10 miles. It seems like the taxpayers of North Scranton ought to be given some thought once in a while. I told you a couple times over the years, directly across the street from me are two houses with slate sidewalks that are over 100 years old. This, this, this just shouldn't be. I forget what day the paper said you want to make bicycle lanes downtown. Of all the ridiculous things, it's downtown again. It's over. Downtown, downtown. I'm tired of hearing about downtown. When I sit in the lawyer's office across from the courthouse, oh, I see some homeless people with a bicycle here and there, sunning themselves. Bicycles don't pay taxes. The gas taxes, which is, I think, a close to 80 cents a gallon, that's for streets and highways. Your sales tax is, what, 6% when you buy a car? You're talking about it sometimes $1,000 or more. You're worried about taking away from cars from bicycles. It's not right. You know, what's his name, Mr. Speck? He belongs in Holland or Denmark, where everybody's riding bicycles around instead of cars. What's the consensus? You're going, the next thing, you'll be listening to that Cortez lady and just ban cars from downtown, make everybody happy. I don't-
We're definitely not doing that.
Yeah, well, she, you know, the cars that go with the way of the cows and everything else that she doesn't like. It hadn't dawned on her, she said to take a train, that those are diesels. In today's paper, I only had a couple of things to bother you with. In today's paper, the letters to the editor, I don't know if you read them, great big long, about the friends of the Lakewanna wanting to close the landfill, of course. A gentleman wrote, "We need a termination date for all landfills." I'd be ashamed to sign my name under something that ridiculous, you know? I remember when the landfill was further up the street, it was over 100 years old, in the same place, what, like a football field up the street or so? And I, I know none of you probably saw them, but I saw that big, you know, I worked for Mr. De Naples when they were building all that, all that plumbing and stuff that's under there for leachite in the water plant. And I remember those houses being built on slag piles. That's why there's some four cracks every time something happens on the highway. They were built around a landfill, for crying out loud. I said years ago, they did the same thing in Memphis. They bought a bunch of cheap land out at the airport. They wanted to close the airport for a bunch of little cheap houses. It's, it's just, all the problems in this city, you need to start thinking of things for the people of this city that are paying for everything, instead of a bunch of people like this Jefferson across the street that doesn't pay taxes or nothing, and keeps getting grants and loan forgiveness and tax abatements. And then Mr. Foley, he has a lapse of memory to send them taxes.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hara.
It hasn't, leave it up to Marie to find how many people Mr. Foley didn't send tax statements to. He sent mine. He didn't forget me. It's enough of this downtown crap with going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Yeah, a few quick, very quick items. The first one was about Nick from Meet in the Middle. I love a good startup. I love when someone's starting a business and getting rolling. And I know how difficult it could be to keep that business going and all the obstacles to get in his way. So Ms. Reed, if we could send a follow-up letter to ABM and maybe Jessica in our law department, and just see where they are with that process, and then copy counsel on the response. Also, a separate correspondence to ABA. Do they, I don't, I'm guessing they don't, but, I mean, we, it's a shot in the dark. I know they operate in many cities, and we're not the only city that operates delivery service. But is there a protocol for them, for delivery drivers? Do they offer a delivery pass? Somebody where if there's a obviously well-marked commercial vehicle, you know, for a 30-second, 45-second drop-off, is there something that they actually have in place in other cities that they used, that we could steal from and copy and maybe help this young guy out, keep his business going? I don't want to see him get derailed. In small businesses, especially startups, the margins are very tiny. And these fines, you know, that could be enough to drive someone out of the business, and, you know, we're trying to drag them in, not, not drive them out. Number two, if we can send something off to Mr. Balzoni, just an update with the Sorenti grants. I just want to see where we are. That, also going to copy to all the councilmen on the work that is going to be done, and the funds that are going to cover that work. We just want to make sure the work done and the grants coming in are matching up. So I'll be waiting to hear from Mr. Balzoni on that. And then finally, I know we talked about this in caucus, City Hall. If we can send something out to Mr. Ahora, who's our building maintenance, I know I spoke to him, he spoke to most of us over the phone over the past couple of weeks, just to give us an idea of what's happening. And we did have the presentation by Highland. And I was on the record last week by saying how, you know, this is our building, this is our home, and I want to hold on to it. And I believe that it is our responsibility to fix it and take care of it. But it is my responsibility to do my due diligence and hear from everybody involved, and to have all options on the table. And one of those options is to meet with our building maintenance manager, and let him show me the building and show me all his concerns. And if you would set that up with them at a time that's convenient, and then copy all the council members, and if anybody's willing to, or wants to join us, they're more than welcome to walk the building with us at that time. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yeah, just briefly. After reading Saturday's Scranton Times article regarding the delinquent trash fees that totaled more than $16.8 million, I couldn't help but think about people all across the city, who may have fallen on hard times, or are struggling financially for any reason whatsoever, who still manage to pay their taxes on time, and pay their garbage fees on time. And it's just absolutely infuriating that we are putting our residents in a situation where we have 75% of responsible property owners basically subsidizing the 25% of the irresponsible home buyers. And then even after scrolling through the list of delinquents, I became even more enraged by the fact that there are many names on that list that absolutely have the means to pay that fee. They just decide not to. Where is the accountability? What is the mayor and his administration doing to hold delinquent property owners accountable, and to make sure we collect as much of these delinquencies as possible? In at least the last 15 months since I've been on this council, accountability hasn't been a top priority for the court-right administration. That needs to end, if the city is going to move forward in a positive direction. On a more positive note, I'd like to talk about the NEPA Trash Tag Challenge that was highlighted in Friday's paper. As we move into spring, it's hard not to notice the amount of trash lighting streets all across the city, and it looks terrible. For the Trash Tag Challenge, participants take before and after pictures in a littered area, then post the pictures on Facebook or Instagram with the hashtags #TrashTag, NEPA#TrashTag, and custom hashtags for participating businesses. Participating businesses will offer special deals for our participants who tag the business in their before and after photos. I strongly encourage as many people as possible to participate in this challenge. I know I will be. By picking a spot in your neighborhood to clean up, you're not only showing pride in your neighborhood, but you just might inspire your neighbors to do the same. With that, I'll end with a quote from Gandhi, "Be the change you want to see in the world." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any motions or comments?
A few comments. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Holy Cross High School Mock Trial team. They are now the 2019 Mock Trial Pennsylvania State Champions. It's a great accomplishment for everyone that's involved with their, their success story. Special congratulations to my cousin Jay's granddaughter, Erica Pica, who was a member of the team, as well as a Scranton resident. On the delinquent trash fee story, we all should be shocked, dismayed, upset, disgusted, at the level of outstanding delinquencies for unpaid trash fees. So the question is, what do we do now? For now, I'd like to offer a couple of ideas and comments on this issue. First of all, let's look at the entity that has the highest amount owed, PSN Realty Incorporated from Bronxville, New York. That company owes $125,375.99. And there's no doubt that the majority of their 19 city properties owned by PSN are most likely income properties that would come under the rental registration program. So I'd like to send a letter to Mr. Hinton and Mr. Leskey in the License and Inspection Department to see if they could determine which properties owned by PSN are registered under the rental registration ordinance, and which ones are actually occupied by tenants, and where rents are currently being collected. The most recent version of the rental registration ordinance states in Section 373-9, subsection C, the following: "No landlord or owner with outstanding fines resulting, resulting from a violation of municipal ordinances, as well as delinquent taxes, and/or garbage fees, shall be eligible to obtain a license to rent residential real estate in the municipality of Scranton unless such fines, taxes, and fees are paid in full." It couldn't be much clearer than that. Additionally, when this city council authored the most recent version of the ordinance, we included this additional section, Section 373-10 Rental escrow program, which in effect allows the city to create an escrow account for the direct deposits of rent from properties that are in violation of the ordinance, or who are not registered properly as defined by the ordinance. The city then would hold the rents in escrow until such a time that the unit is registered, and the rents would be released back to the owner only after all fees, all liens, and all services, except, etc., are payable to the city of Scranton are paid, plus a surcharge of 20% payable to the city of Scranton of the escrow funds. My point is that we have other tools in our tool belt, especially as they relate to residential rental properties. The question is, are we using them, and are we using them effectively? Also, it has become increasingly clear to me that the pay-as-you-thrown bag type of collection plan could eliminate the need for the fee, or at least minimize it, while at the same time, would dramatically increase the performance of our recycling program throughout the city. And I think this is something that needs serious, serious consideration. On stormwater, there was a very good article in the newspaper today by John O'Connell about the stormwater issue. It's certainly explained in depth the reasons for pursuing a more regional approach, and why it makes the most sense. This is the approach I favor, of course, and I think most of us on city council do as well. And we have enlisted Senator Blake to help us gather the forces of all the little towns and municipalities up and down the Mid Valley and above, to see if we can get together and try to have that conversation about a regional approach. The reality is, this is an unfunded mandate, but it is a mandate nonetheless. And the more we can do to minimize the long-term impact of all of our citizens, the more responsible we are as leaders of our community. According to the article in York, Pennsylvania, or York County, for example, the county leaders took the initiative to pursue the regional approach. That is leadership. This discussion is extremely important, and should never be reduced to disingenuous campaign taglines like #NoRainTax. And finally, as my, as my custom for the last few weeks, I just want to remind everybody, every day is your chance to make this city a little better. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to make a motion that city council invite Northeast Revenue Services, City Treasurer Wayne Beck, and any other appropriate members of the administration to a public caucus in council chambers to discuss the delinquent garbage fees.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I mean, it goes without saying that this whole issue is outrageous, that this much money is owed. And I think somebody mentioned earlier tonight, it begs the question, and I'm sure most people in the city who are paying this are saying, "Why should I pay?" I too went through the list and was, you know, shocked like everybody else, as Councilman Donahue said, knowing that there are certainly entities and other people that probably have the means to pay it, that it seems like they're just, just not doing it. I think we need to have a conversation with Northeast Revenue Services about what has been done to collect the delinquent garbage fees, what is being done, and what their plan is, and what the administration's plan is moving forward, obviously in light of this issue. Looking back at an article in the Scranton Times and a meeting that council had back in 2016, Northeast Revenue Services filed 2,420 liens on delinquencies from 2011 to 2013. Those unpaid garbage bills totaled nearly $1.47 million. And at that time, Councilman Wexler said, "It's a huge amount of money for a struggling city like our own." At that time, the warnings and the threats, the letters that they sent out, worked somewhat. There was $460,000 coughed up in just one month. As of May 31, 2016, NRS had collected a total of $1.8 million in 2011 to 2013 delinquencies. So I think it goes without saying that we do need to have a meeting with NRS, with the city treasurer, and with any other members of the administration to get this situation under control. Because my question is, and what I was thinking about when this whole thing came up, is, you know, what's the end game here? Even if we clean up, some of the delinquencies are those same residents, and I had this conversation with the business administrator, going to return to delinquent status. So I think we need to step back and look at everything. The other thing that we can't forget is that what looms in the background- The other thing that we can't forget is that what looms in the background here is the lawsuit that the city finds itself in regarding the trash fee, the $300 trash fee. So that also poses an issue. The other question I would have, are we applying a lien based on the cumulative amount that people owe? What is, what I'd like to ask NRS too, is what is considered or might be considered uncollectible? Have they gone through that list? Are there people on there that have passed away? So what, you know, money can we get? The other thing that I, just an idea that I threw out in the caucus before the regular meeting, and I brought this up a few years ago, and I'm not even sure how it would work with this particular issue, but would an amnesty-type program work? In other words, if, and it's been done in other cities in Pennsylvania and across the United States, if the city were to offer a one-time amnesty on the trash, the delinquent trash fee and say, we're going to waive the penalties and the interest if you come forward in this amount of time and either pay in full or get on a payment plan, maybe something like that would work. I think that's something too that we should consider. And that's all I have on that issue.
Anyone else on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
The second thing I have, I was asked by a few residents about some DPW issues, specifically the street sweeper. Mrs. Reed spoke to Mr. Gallagher, the DPW director. The grant that the city applied for to get a new street sweeper is expected to come in. The city's actually getting two street sweepers, so we'll have three that will be operational. The sweepers are expected for delivery this Friday. They'll be titled, insured, city logos will be applied. Last year, the street sweeping program began approximately April 30th, so should be on the same track this year. The city will, as they always do, provide a list for announcement purposes, and it will be published on the city's website as well. Last week, I also asked about the 2019 paving program. Mrs. Reed spoke to Mr. Bolzoni. He said that there should be approximately $1 million for paving, and that would come from money in the liquid fuels allocation and some other monies that should be remaining. We did receive a letter from Mrs. Novembreno, the city controller, that she is submitting the name of Annette Pollutis for, as her pick for the Code of, the ethics board. So we're just waiting on the administration for the other two. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. First, regarding the status of City Hall, I agree with Councilman Perry. I do like his suggestion of doing a tour of the building with Paul Ahora, the facilities manager. You know, I've been on council nine, 10 years now, and I know I've never been in the basement, the sub-basement of this building. So that's something that we did see in our report that I don't think any of us here, a section of the building, we've never been in. So I do think it is a good idea to see with our own eyes what's going on, not only what was in the report that was presented to us. In this issue, there's been a lot of talk about it, and I know I'm probably on the wrong side of this politically, but I think it's the right thing to do is to have an open mind and to look at the dollars and cents of what is going to be the most bang for the buck for the taxpayers and also where the city will be able to give the best services to the taxpayers, whether it's in this facility or somewhere else. So I think we need to keep, keep an open mind on other locations. I do agree that whatever happens with this building, it certainly needs to be preserved. So I have a very open mind when it comes to this, and I am looking forward to seeing certain parts of this building that aren't open to the public or even to council members on a daily basis, to see the true condition of some of these other parts of the building. Seeing it on a screen doesn't give you the same perspective as seeing it in real life. So that's something I'm definitely looking forward to doing. Next, on the garbage fee, I know this has been a hot topic, especially since the school directors appointed an individual that owed quite a bit of money on back garbage fees. My position on that, there's three different criteria for people that have not paid their garbage fee. Number one, which it's no fault of their own, there's errors, people that actually don't owe the money, houses that may have been torn down but a bill's still being generated, and other clerical errors. I would guess that is a very, very small portion of what is owed. So I think there are some people whose names may be on that list that actually do not owe the money because there are mistakes that are made, and we get contacted by residents all the time that get a bill in error, something was paid. So that is a small portion of the outstanding amount. The second portion, and this is the one that bothers me the most, and some of my colleagues alluded to this, these are people who won't pay, not people who can't pay. There are many names on that list, and there's been, and it's the same with the tax delinquencies that you see, who own multiple, multiple properties, as Councilman Evans mentioned. And those are the people that should not be given any sort of break. They chose not to pay those bills. You do not go 20 years without paying a garbage bill and say, oh, I fell on hard times. One year, two years, you lose a job. Sure, let's help those people out where we can, but not people who just got the bill and threw it in the garbage. And that's what a lot of people do. Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of recourse the city has for people who don't pay their garbage bills. Not picking up the trash isn't a viable solution because it's going to cause an issue for the neighbors, it's going to cause a public health issue. So that's not a solution. The city legally does not have the right to take a house for not paying a garbage bill the way if you don't pay your taxes, eventually your house will go up for sale. So that's not an option either. I do agree with putting liens on homes for people who have not paid their bills. But again, a lien only comes into effect when that property is going to be sold or somebody's going to put a mortgage on it. So eventually, the city will get paid, but people live in their houses 20, 30, 40, 50 years. That's a long time to wait, and obviously, the value of money changes over time. So $300 in 2050 is not $300 today. So there's that aspect as well. Now, there is a segment of people, and I'm hoping, I believe, and I think it's a small segment, that have fallen on hard times. Maybe they lost their job last year and couldn't pay the bill. You know, maybe they're struggling to keep their mortgage. That group of people should be given a break if there's an opportunity to do some type of program. I would not support a blanket amnesty program across the board. There would have to be some sort of either a means test or a test to show that there actually is a financial hardship. Just throwing the bills away for 20 years and not paying it and then coming and paying the face value, to me, is not a solution, and it's not fair. A speaker did bring up the idea, and it's been done in the past, of trying to shame people into paying their bills, publishing them in the newspaper. Not something that I would be opposed to doing, of publishing the whole list. The issue with that is, the list has to be vetted first because I know in the past, when those names have been published, there have been people on that list that actually did not owe the fee. So they were wrongfully embarrassed. I do think if that route, if we do decide to go that route, it shouldn't be limited to the newspaper. Especially people my age, they don't buy the newspaper. They're on social media, they're on different sites like that where that could be another angle as well, to try to shame people into paying their bills. Unfortunately, we have to discuss it. People have brought it up, it's been done in the past, and it's been moderately successful. But again, for me, there are those three categories. And the one that bothers me the most, and I would like to focus on, are the ones who are just simply refusing not to pay. Councilman Evans brought up some other ideas. I have long advocated for eliminating this system and going to their private system or a per-bag system. Again, I know it's not popular, and there's problems with that type of change as well, but that would ensure that we wouldn't have this issue. So there'll be much more discussion on this, but I do think there's more work that needs to be done on our end because it is not fair that the people who are paying and doing the right thing are footing the bill for those who aren't because if you didn't pay your garbage for the last 20 years, your garbage was still picked up. So more to come on that, and that is all for tonight. Thank you.
Five B for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 95, 2015, an ordinance entitled, amending file of the council number 79 of 2015, and ordinance amending file of the council number 145 of 2007, entitled, "An Ordinance Renaming the Emergency and Municipal Services Tax to Local Service Tax and by imposing a withholding of $52 for the calendar year 2015, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter by increasing the local services tax withholding from $52 to $156 for the calendar year 2015 and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2015 under and pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act, Act 511 of 1965, PL 1257, 53PS, Section 6924.101 et cec., and the Municipalities Recovery Act, Act 47 of 1987, PL 246, 53PS, Section 11701.101 et cec., and their respective amendments effective retroactive to January 1, 2019. This tax is expected to generate approximately $4,653 in revenue in calendar year 2019 by enabling the city of Scranton to continue to levy the local services tax at the fiscal year 2018 rate for fiscal year 2019 for a total maximum local services rate of $156 for the fiscal year 2019 effective retroactive to January 1, 2019, and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income tax and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2019."
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Five C for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 58, 2016, as amended, an ordinance establishing a registration program for residential rental properties requiring all owners of residential rental properties to designate a property manager for service of process and prescribing duties of owners, property managers, and occupants by amending Section 4A1 and B1 and 2, and Section 10A to abolish the tiered rate structure for 2019 and reduce the rental registration fee for 2020 and 2021.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I know this is about the lawsuit, but as we discussed in the caucus, while we have this on the agenda, I'd like, I have two questions that I'd like to ask. Number one, in Section 10 Rental Escrow Program, I would like to know how the city plans on enforcing this, if they have enforced it yet. I think somebody mentioned in the caucus that they don't believe that they have. So I'd like to get an idea on how the city, what the mechanisms are on how the city, if someone doesn't pay their rental registration fee, how the city's going to enforce escrowing those, the money that somebody who lives in one of those buildings would pay would then go to the city and be escrowed. So I'd like to know how that program is going to work. The second thing that I brought up in the caucus as well, a few years ago, the city entered into an agreement with James Moran. The name of his company has escaped my mind at this point, but the company was supposed to go out and identify those rental properties that were not registering. So I'd like an update on that program. There was supposed to be a hotline. Rental properties were supposed to display stickers so that the city could identify them. So I'd like to know what has been done. Someone mentioned in the caucus that that company had been sold to Community Champions, which the city also does business with. So I had asked our solicitor, I would, I don't, I'd assume that then that contract would have to come back before city council if someone enters into an agreement and then sells the company or whatever happened there. So I'd just like clarification on that. And that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Five D for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to create a 2020 Complete Count Committee to partner with the U.S. Census Bureau to ensure that every resident in the city of Scranton is counted in the 2020 census.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 60, 2019, an ordinance amending file of the council number 28, 2013, an ordinance as amended transferring a temporary construction agreement of city-owned property located in the 100 block of Harrison Avenue to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the construction of the removal of the Harrison Avenue Bridge and installation of a newly constructed Harrison Avenue Bridge for the sum of $7,000 to extend the temporary easement from two years to five years with an updated offer of just compensation of $10,600.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A past reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned.